All right, I'd like to call the June 13th, 2023 School Board Meeting to order. Can I have, I will roll call. Mandy Demers.
Here.
Todd Marsh.
Here.
Susan Tierney.
Here.
Barbara Wentworth.
Here.
Marcia Brown.
Here.
Carrie Clark.
Here.
Paul Hackworth.
Here.
Tom McCallion. All right, thank you, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you and welcome. You have a consent calendar, what's the wish of the board to adopt the consent calendar as presented?
Point of order, comments by visitors?
Oh, sorry, of course, thank you, I went straight by that. Yeah, Agenda Item Number Two, Comments by Visitors. Any comments by visitors this evening? Okay, all right, seeing none. Now, what is the wish of the board for the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion about what's in the consent calendar? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the consent calendar is adopted. All right, our Agenda Item Number Four, our reports. 4.1 Superintendent Report, Caitlin, thank you.
Hi, Caitlin Carrington, Director of Career Technical Education, just here to present an end of the year report for you. As any school year ends, it's a hectic time, we've had a mix of graduations, celebrations, recognition nights, step up days, proms, and semi-formals and ceremonies celebrating student, staff, academic, and just overall being a good person achievements. Our educators have spent a great deal of time with families at these events, and those interactions are so important to the end of the very long school year for the reminders of the why. We've had a lot of nominations for new staff members that will be joining us next year as we say goodbye and well wishes to those of us who are retiring and moving on to their next adventure, and we thank them for their service. The end of the year is a bittersweet moment, excitement for the summer, but also the sadness that can come with the parting from those you've grown to care about. Teachers saying goodbye to groups of kids they spent the year with, and students unsure of what the next grade level will bring them. The end of any school year is really just a marker for the next transition, whether it be the transition into a new school, a new grade, a new teacher, or a new teaching job. The end of the school year really is never about the end. It's just a transition onto the next part of the journey and one hopefully we've all done our part to prepare each other for. For those feeling those bittersweet feelings as this year comes to a close, as you look to figure out your next steps and your role in the world, here are a few questions that may help you find your focus as we head into the summer. What brings me joy, what am I good at, and what does the world need of me? It can be hard to see all the opportunities that are within each of our reach, but there are so many positive possibilities for each of us. Sometimes we just need to take a moment to remember. So with that, to our families, students, and educators, the district wishes you a wonderful and relaxing summertime, and for those in our schools that work during the summer, thank you in advance for all your efforts in planning to make the next school year another excellent educational experience for all of us, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Agenda Item 4.2, there's a financial report in your packet today. Katie is on vacation, so if there's any questions about that that's immediate or notices, welcome any comments on that, otherwise, she's back on the 20th for any clarity. There's a tight margin, end of the year, what's left, I think it's 0.6% of our overall budget, so not a lot of leftover funds to work with, but that's the overall snapshot. Agenda Item 4.3, our City Council Update, Councilor Austin.
Madam Chair, I just bring congratulations to the class of 2023 this evening from the City Council and hope that all the staff and students have a safe and healthy and relaxing summer vacation, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Agenda Item 4.4, our Student Representative Report, favorite part, Sophia.
Thank you, so next week is the last day of school, June 22nd. Last week, there was graduation at the UNH Whittamore Center. Previously to that, we had our Senior Award Assembly on May 31st. The graduates did a parade around each of the schools on June 5th, and they also had their senior banquet that day. They had a senior barbecue on the 7th. And after their graduation, they had a project grad. They had a hypnotist, games, movies, and they ended the night or the morning with a sunrise at the beach. Our junior class had our prom, May 20th, at Portwalk Place in Portsmouth. Next week, the high school has finals, the 21st and the 22nd. Underclassmen awards at the high school are June 16th. Our AP US History class went to Boston last week for a field trip. The middle school, 8th grade graduation is June 20th, and the Maplewood, 5th grade graduation is June 21st. Both the middle school and Maplewood had their field days already, and tomorrow is Idol Horse Field Day. Summer school is July 10th or 27th to make up credits and whatnot. And that's it, we hope everybody has a good summer.
Thank you both so much for being our student representatives this year, I really appreciate it, taking time out of really busy schedule. Moving to Committee Reports, our Standing Committees, Agenda Item 5.1. I don't believe there'll be much, but Board Member Marsh, Budget and Revenue?
I can make up something, but just not the numbers. The Budget and Revenue Committee has not met, and the next meeting is to be announced, thank you.
Thank you. Building Grounds and Transportation, Board Member Hackworth.
We have also not met, but looking to meet next week.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. Educational Programs and Community Outreach, Board Member Wentworth.
Will be TBD.
Okay, all right, and Board Member Tierney with our Policy Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the Policy Committee has not met since our last board meeting, we'll meet in August.
Okay, and these are the final policies on the agenda tonight for second reading.
Yes.
Great. There are no presentations this evening, so moving into Agenda Item 7, our Policy Adoption. There's no policies for first reading, but Agenda Item 7.2, Policies for Second Reading, we have three.
So point of clarity, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Regarding Policy BEA, we discovered very last minute that the policy that is in your packet for BEA is not the one that you all read for first reading at the last meeting. So when we do vote on this for second reading, you're not voting on the version that's in your packet, you're voting on the version that we saw last time, which has not changed.
That was in the last packet.
Which has not changed at all.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting and there's been no, there's been no Policy Committee, does that make sense? Yep, okay, sorry about that, but we have three. So, read them by title only.
I motion.
I would like to make a motion for her to read the, or for someone to read the policies by title only.
I second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Policy BEA, and this should actually just say board meetings, not regular board meetings. BEC-R, Non-Public Session Minutes Form, and BDE Committees, sorry, Committees and Board Member Assignments/Liaisons.
Okay. Been read for first and second time, sorry about the update, but it is in your May 23 packet and no changes have been made to BEA. Lot of work though on that, so thank you to the Policy Committee for that. Moving all the other policies into that, it's been really helpful to see in one place. All right, what's the wish of the board to adopt the policies as presented?
I make a motion to adopt the three policies just read.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, policies adopted, BEA, BC-R, and BDE. New Business, Agenda Item 8.1, is to approve superintendent authority to conduct summer hiring. This means we don't do this, we'll have to make some more board meetings to be present in July, which we typically are not. So what is the wish of the board for this very typical approval to grant the superintendent authority to conduct summer hiring? Yes?
I think the motion is very typical, but we're in a very... Usually we would know what that actually means and who that means. And so I don't know how we could do this.
Oh, is your microphone on?
Without knowing what and who, because we have an interim now, but we don't know for how long. So is it granting whoever is acting or...
Acting superintendent, yep, to hire, so to get the hiring through without running it by the board as, you know, under 93A, you know, under 93A, 32B.
No, I understand, like, I'm getting all the nuance of it, I'm trying to explain that that's a trust thing. And it's hard to know who we're bestowing that upon, whether it's going to be Caitlin if she's gonna do it, or somebody else that we have to pull in because things haven't resolved, or if Ms. Lane comes back, that obviously would have made it pretty easy to do what we've typically done, but...
Would a potential resolution be to, you know, we're trying to figure out how to do this without the school board being put back into session?
Yep.
So would an addendum to this be running it by the chair and co-chair, you know, vice chair to like just review, to have a review of it during the summer? You know, I don't know what other people think of that, so...
And then my question also becomes, we have some pretty major vacancies that are not like filling the typical paraprofessional stuff, and I think historically we've also put a caveat on it that for major roles within the SAU office or building admin, if that should need a turnover or something, that that's not a unilateral decision that we're giving power for. So like, for example, if Nancy's position was filled.
Right.
I don't, I feel like that's something we as a board should have eyes on, ask questions about, and vote on for the bigger positions.
Okay.
And that would regardless of who's in there.
Yep, we'd have to, so, yep, Board Member Tierney, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, and I think you're making really good points, Mandy. I'm just wondering if in light of the extenuating circumstances, we maybe just allow that for the possibility that the board maybe asks who convene during the summer, and those who are around and available, you know, since we have a quorum, we meet? And if not, I mean, just throwing it out there, maybe it's...
There's a lot of hiring, so it would have to be every week or two weeks to be able to get people to be hired effectively.
We don't have that many openings left, according to the superintendent. Last update, she said she only had four or five things to fill.
I think we have more than, I think we have more. Board Member Clark followed by Wentworth, yeah.
So I would like to second like what Mandy had said, I think it's a great idea that we come together. This is like different times. For sure, I know that's not ideal, no, we don't.
Every two weeks during the summer, or every week.
That we would have to do.
Right, so...
That's my feeling, maybe the board as a whole is not...
We'll let everyone weigh in on it, Wentworth followed by Marsh.
I would like to make a...
There's, is there a motion on the, I don't think there's any motion on the table right now. Okay, yep, no.
Maybe there's about to be. I'd like to make a motion, or maybe someone can help me with the wording of this. As far as paraprofessionals and teachers, I feel that whoever is in the role of superintendent, one of the qualifications is to be able to assign those. However, I think administrative and/or SAU office, Nancy's position, things like that, I think absolutely need to be run by the board. I'm not sure of the language as far as the differential differentiation between admin, SAU employees, and regular staff.
Are you just saying, okay, all right, let's...
Does that make sense?
Are you asking for like one specific role to be run through, to be at a board meeting? Because we're, again, we'd have to, if we don't grant the authority to hire for something, or just to say for like administrators?
Yeah, I would grant the approval for the superintendent to conduct summer hiring for all employees other than admin and/or SAU.
Just at administrators, yeah.
Yeah. Is that all encompassing what I'm talking about?
Administrator.
Is that typical of what we had done? I feel like we have had to hear about the bigger positions.
Let's see who's been, I'm trying to think historically if there's been any like administrator roles hired, you know, hired in the summer.
Dawn, can you?
Yep, yep, Councilor Austin, if there's like historical background of that.
Typically what you'll see happen is you allow the superintendent to make the hiring decisions subject to approval by the board because the superintendent nominates and the board hires. So I think you could go along that route with, if you want to review all of those nominations, you certainly can do that. I know that in the past, you know, we've actually allowed this to happen, and the superintendent, it's more, here's what we did, if there's anybody on here that you really have a problem with, let's talk about it, but otherwise, here's what we did. That's kind of what this is intended to do.
Right, yeah, I mean, the notification can always go by the board, but we're trying to limit the, you know, what we do typically is going into non-public and coming out and having a board meeting for that, yeah. Board Member Tierney.
So would it be allowed to send, so the information that we typically would have, the resumes, right? Would it be okay to send those through us via email that we could look over? And then, I mean, I just, I don't know if that's allowed, first of all.
Yeah, that's really sensitive, because we don't keep them, we don't keep them typically. It could be like a, they could be available to review at the SAU office, something like that.
Yeah, so, okay, so, let's just, let me just kind of think the, complete the thought. So my thinking is, if we have the resumes available, then it could be a case where we all have a chance to look them over, you know, they're made available to us to look over, and then if there's any, you know, concerns, questions, whatever, we can, you know, bring them to you. I mean, and if there's a need to bring us together to talk about something, which I could see discussion may, the administrative positions might lend themselves more to discussion versus the, you know, some of the other roles.
And there's a timeliness to it, right, yep, go ahead, yep, come on up.
Do it, do it.
I believe the way things are written, you've given the board chair the ability to appoint a superintendent. So I would think that you could say whether whoever she's appointed or Ms. Lane returns, that there's trust in at least the teachers and the pairs, and you could say it based on contract, so people in the SACA contract or in the SAE contract could be hired as we normally do in the summer. We would be very concerned about letting things linger too long because we're trying to catch them while they're good. So I would encourage that, and in the same way, you could say if we're filling somebody who is not in those contracts, or, well, I wouldn't say, like administrators or SAU would present that to, and that wouldn't be as quick of a hire anyway, we would want to go through a little bit of a process, so...
And you think, yeah, and I think that the motion would, yeah, just hold for a second, go ahead.
Well, as some of the hiring happens, some resignations are coming in that we'll share tonight in non-public, but, so some of it is a little bit in limbo of that, but we're moving them quickly, I can say that.
Okay, great, thank you. So, all right, let me just clarify, so the amended kind of motion is to allow the superintendent authority to conduct summer hiring other than administrating, administrators, rather, you know, in that clarity of people on contract. Is that...
Madam Chair, you can also put it as non-union versus union contracts.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Administrators, okay, all right, all right, all right, got a motion on the table, do we have a second? Second? Second the motion? Okay.
Can I have the motion reread?
Oh.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we clarify that motion?
Yep.
I make a motion for the, I want to get the language right, hold on.
And if we can check on the live stream bill, if there's an update with what's going, if it's getting uploaded or...
I would like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's authority to conduct summer hiring excluding admin.
Excluding administrators? Marcia? Carrie?
I just didn't know if I heard administrators and admin interchangeably or admin and administrators, sorry for the...
I apologize, I was saying administrators as admin interchangeably. I make a motion to approve the superintendent's authority to conduct summer hiring excluding administrators.
Is that good for you? Okay?
Okay.
Very good, all right.
I'll second that.
Done that, right, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no, okay, passes. Give Katie a roll for, to do the minutes. All right, there's no older unfinished business, future meeting dates. Our next board meeting is August 15th, August 29th, September 12th, September 26th. Agenda Item Number 11, Comments by Visitors. If there are any comments by visitors this evening, approach the podium, we would be happy to hear you. All right, moving on to board members. Yep, just raise your hand and I'll call on you, Wentworth, Clark, McCallion.
I, happy summer, everybody, yes, it's happening. And I believe that this is Nancy's last meeting with us, and so I just really wanted to acknowledge you and all of the amazing work that you've done for our district, and just really appreciate and value you. And then also, graduation was awesome, it was so fun. Chris, I'm sure you have enough hair combs now to last you for a little while. And I hope everyone has a great summer.
Great, thank you. Clark, McCallion?
Yeah, I just want to say again, just congratulations to the class of 2023. It's been amazing watching these kids grow up. My oldest son is in that class as well, and it's amazing to see all these kids come and see what they're gonna do in the future, and I'm excited for 8th grade, Step Up Day, there are kids graduating from there as well, and all of our lovely family, the Summer's Worth, I hope everyone has a great summer.
Thank you to the staff for great graduation. Was really interesting, especially in the speakers and the graduation they had filled in for that, that was really nice. And again, Nancy, you'll be very much missed, thank you very much for your time. And everybody have a great summer.
Tierney, yep.
Okay, there we go, thank you. So, yes, congratulations to all the graduates. Barbara and I were commenting on how every student had a cheering section, and it was just wonderful, like every student had support, like the whole, the whole of the auditorium. There were a few students in particular who had an amazing cheering section, which I wished everybody had that, but I am, but it was just heartwarming for every kid that got up there, you know, the love was there, that was wonderful. Nancy? On a personal note, Nancy has worked with my kiddo, and it's just been great. I wish he could still have you around, but I know he's in good hands, but it's just, you're an amazing woman, triathlete, by the way, did you know that about her? Amazing. It's just, you've done amazing work, and I just, my heart goes out to all of you who work in the special education, you know, because, yeah. There's a lot of kids who need it, and the help is not there outside of the districts right now. On a personal note, I will say that, it's been a real personal frustration of mine to try to get outside help. So there's a big demand, so those who are graduating, go into the health, the mental health fields and help, you know, kids and children, they need it, we need them. So, thank you, and great, good luck to you in your next adventure.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Board Member Brown? Yep.
My turn to hearty, congratulations to the graduates. Can't wait to see what you're gonna become and do in the future. I also just reflect this past year, I'm grateful for all the presentations that we've had, both with the athletics and the academics, and all of the new ways that teachers are embracing, meeting the needs of our students, and I very much appreciate that. Board specific, thank you for pointing me on policy, because, you know, being a lawyer, I kind of like rules and regulations, and so as we comb through them, we've made good progress this year on them, and we'll be combing through the rest of them, picking and choosing which works for our district in the fall. So there is more to come, and have a great summer, and restful summer, everybody.
Thank you, Board Member Marsh.
Thank you, I've been very impressed with the Policy Committee this year, so, kudos, thank you. Congratulations to the class of 2023. This is a post-9/11 generation. They are not under any illusion of a challengeless world. And I am confident that they will meet these challenges with passion, thoughtful deliberation, and with the knowledge of their ability to affect change. So congratulations to them. Also, Nancy, thank you for all you have done, not just for the district, but for the children. Thank you for choosing a profession of helping children with, that will eventually become adults, with unique needs, so, thank you. And I wish all the students and Team Summer's Worth a memorable and safe summer, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? No? All right. The graduation was really wonderful, I think that, you know, Mr. Sealy and Mr. Witham from City Council, I mean, the speakers were wonderful, the students are wonderful, you could really feel the energy, and Mr. Tebow, you're such a good sport, and that was, that was, that was... Yeah, I think that's when you're, you've got four years and they've just come at you, and I shook so many combs, I'm like, what, you know, then I got on to it. So best wishes to that class of 2023, it's a special class, and to everyone else for a safe summer. Nancy, just for my, you know, own best wishes to you, the impact that you've had on so many students, we know it, we feel it out in the community. Just knowing what you've done and the energy you've put in, hopefully that comes back to you and that uplifts you and your future and your family and who you are because it's, you know, it's just incredible work, and such needed work, so best wishes to you. To the board, thank you for all your time. Nothing quite compared to everyone in our schools and staff and people that just have, have put in so much time with our students and our community, but we've put in a lot of time this year, so this is our final meeting of the, of the school board meeting of the year, so my heartfelt gratitude for everything that you put in, appreciate that. And with that, we are going into non-public, per 91A, 32B, C, and L. Do I have a motion to go into non-public? Motion to go into non-public?
Seconded.
Okay, I'm gonna need, I'm gonna do the roll call. Demers?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Tierney?
Yes.
Wentworth?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hackworth?
Yes.
McCallion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you everybody, happy summer.
Yep, thank you.